Yes, you're live.
Okay, thank you. All right, good evening. Welcome to the October 12, 2022 meeting of the board. Thank you for those of us, for those of you who are present and joining us online. I'd like to call this meeting to order. May I roll call, please? Hunt?
Yes.
Wing?
Yes.
Clarence?
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
I do not believe there are any changes in the agenda, so may I have an approval of the agenda, please? So, thank you. I'll second. Thank you. Phillip?
Yes.
I mean?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
Clarence?
Yep.
Williams? Yes. Right, to my knowledge, we do not have any visitors or public comment. So we will move on to special presentations, and we welcome Guy Summers with the IJAG program. Welcome, Guy. You come on up to the podium.
All right. How many minutes do I have?
I'm not timing.
How long can you keep us interested?
All right. So, we've started our second year in IJAG. Our numbers are down, but our attitude and the demeanor is way up. Huge difference between last year and this year with the students. Why? Because everybody that's there wanted to be there this year, and we're out of them. So, I just wanted to address that right up front. We did recruit, and we were going to have 27 students. We lost two who withdrew from school, two that moved, four that had schedule conflicts, and one just decided that they didn't want to be here. So I might gain some of those students back. And I do have a strategy in place for recruit new students. I am sitting in on ninth grade AOs every day, a different class each month. That way I build relationships with ninth graders, not to exclude 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. But if I can get 10th graders, we can keep them in the program each month. I'm popping in, popping in on launches and just hanging out with students more on the holiday. And then, of course, as I did last year, I will use the students and helping them to build the skills to reach out to other students. So, we will get our numbers up. I am excited about different things going on in the program that show growth individually with students. One of the biggest things, we have our first internship apprenticeship, if you will, thanks to Camlin Mechanical and Randy Watts and people there. So that's exciting. Connor Byrd is actually working at Camlin Mechanical now and learning the trade and the art and the skill. Randy has brought him on at a little younger age than normal. He would usually take somebody at 17, but he took a 16-year-old knowing he'll be 17 in just a couple of months. So that's exciting. We also have the entire first semester of guest speakers planned, and we're doing that different this year where we're combining with different teachers and programs that are work-based learning focused in the school. Often, we would have guest speakers come in with different classrooms. Now because we don't have restraints with space, I'm coordinating that and talk to all the different teachers. And we're meeting in the south pod at the back right corner of the auditorium. We have much more participation as a result. And I've targeted employers that have active internship and apprenticeship programs that offer great careers. So we have people coming in that are part of the future-ready Iowa industries like manufacturing, medical, obviously agriculture, and other target industries that are growing and need employers and offer great, rather need employees and offer great careers here in Iowa. So, we have Mid-American, we have Camlin's coming in, actually this Thursday. Alliance Energy is coming in. And we have a bunch of other employers. Basically, every two weeks, we're bringing in a different employer and career opportunities. I'm looking forward to actually having students get hired as a result of that. I've actually asked if we could consider lining up in, rather, interviews while here, or at least had a sign-up for interviews, things of that sort, to eliminate some steps. So, that might be a new thought, maybe a new idea, that's kind of the way our role. So, I'm also excited that I got to go with Mr. Barber to the Future-Ready Iowa Conference. Is that a thing that my time is up? And we learned about what we could do to actually adopt an apprenticeship program in the school. We have so many elements in place. We have the education aspect, we have employers in town that are supportive of it would participate in an apprenticeship program. If we have the school become the registered apprentice program versus the employer, the huge advantage to student and employer is this. The age drops, drops from 18 to age 60. So students often can't get into an apprenticeship because they have to wait until they're 18. If we can get that age drop to 16 by having the school become the registered apprenticeship, now we have more opportunity, not just for the student, but also obviously for the employer and the community at large. So, I'm excited about that. I'm excited about the attitude difference toward community service this year. And I'm pushing that a lot. Basically, I've set up on Thursdays, we have a guest speaker, and on the opposite week, we do community service. We're only required to get 15 hours, but we'll get a lot more than that. Because I think community service is key to learning to be other-centered. Learning to be other-centered is key to success. So, those are some of the changes. That's the quick summary. I wish I had a document put in front of you tonight, but Mr. Barber asked me, and I was just crazy busy, so I'm doing it on the fly. So I hope I get at least a B for presentations. I now open forth questions.
Could you explain to me how the IJAG program overall, like how you interact with them? Like you personally, like do you, are you able to go to them and say, oh, here, this is what happened to my 27 students I had enrolled? Is that usual? Is that, what are some ideas, you know, for recruitment? Like, do you have support from them at all?
From the actual students?
From IJAG, from all?
From IJAG?
Yeah.
I do. IJAG realizes that every school is different and what they allow, what they do, what they don't do. So, you know, they throw out ideas to me. Mrs. McKay has been very helpful throwing out ideas. Like, for example, right now, today, this week, we actually developed a script. It's part of our curriculum. And that script now became a video. And that video, I'm going to go to Mrs. McKay with and say, remember that idea you gave me? To present a recruiting video, students sharing about IJAG with other students during seminar. Well, that will happen now. I put some signs up, I'm gonna put some other signs up, and that's good marketing. But I think the essence of recruiting is relationship. So, that's what I'm targeting. But does that answer your question?
Well, I was more interested in knowing how you personally interact with IJAG, whether there's any, I mean, are you just completely here at the school now? Or are there things, do you get together with other IJAG teachers? Is there anything like that?
Yes. We have monthly meetings open for an hour that is specific to our region, which is called Region Four. And that's a new region for IJAG because they're starting a lot of their programs. And then we have other online meetings. And I would say probably two to three a month on different things. My supervisor in IJAG is named Colleen Tice, and we stay in touch on a weekly basis.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think it was noted, there was a couple of IJAG folks up at the future area that I had opportunity to meet. All the components that IJAG instructors are supposed to implement within their program. Guy has done all of that. So, I think that throughout the state, if instructors are having troubles implementing some of the components of the IJAG, they will not want more support from IJAG. There's also a lot of those student activities throughout the year that IJAG supports in developing leaders, leadership in students, correct?
Yes, yes. As a matter of fact, on November the 2nd, we will be going to the Leadership Development Conference. We had elections, we elected student leaders called the Career Association. And then we have officers for the Career Association. We have vice presidents. I always tell them, you are leaders, but I will always refer to the servant leader because that's just my bet. So, we will take that group of five elected leaders to the Leadership Development Conference for a day of training to their roles, and then just how to be an effective leader overall. We also have the Career Development Conference in the spring, which is a competition based around different aspects that will help your career to develop. There are different things that you can compete with and for. We actually advanced to state last year with, I believe it was three teams. I'd have to look at my notes. I am 56 years old. And so that was exciting for a first-year team to go to state for the Career Development Conference. And we have a number of other state events that develop leadership in students and train to do that.
Any other questions?
What do you need from us?
What do I need from you and everyone else? Well, Mr. Hunt has visited my class. Thank you. You're always welcome to come and IJAG. The windows are open, but it's better if you come through the door. So, come on in. What do I need from the board? I think everything's in place from the board. You've decided to start the program. Check in on me, make sure I'm on target like you should. And I think I, my goal was to get the numbers up so that we can eventually, if the board and the administration so decide to add an additional program, which would be the eight, nine, to complement the 11, 12. And then, we could even, in the future, go seven, eight. The quicker we get to the students, the more effective we can be in the long run. I worked in the faith-based sector 15 years at the local, regional, state, and regional level. And I knew that to be true there. It's going to be true here. And I hear it all the time when we talk about standards and the New Zello program, for example, and having a holistic view of helping students to attain their goals. So, anyway, that's something I would present to you. And I, that also says to you, I will get the numbers up. I'm not used to failing. That's not an option for me. So, we will have more people, and we will grow this thing. And we'll see that proof in grades, we'll see that in internships, apprenticeships, and I would say in a greater cooperation within the school. Because IJAG shouldn't be, and is not about IJAG. These are all shared values and goals within so many of our programs. And so I'm trying to take that attitude and my daily duties and do things that are gonna work for everybody, like the coordinating speakers and things like that. Okay?
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Likewise.
Moving on, principal reports.
A couple of things I wanted to point out first. Academic excellence, not all of our academics happen in the classroom. As you came in tonight, we'll let it steal this from another. Because it's part of extracurriculars as well. FFA is hosting, as we do most years, the Green Hand Fire Camp. And it was interesting listening to Mr. Miller explain it. He explained it to me a couple of weeks ago, but explained it to Mr. Hunt again today, that really this is not something that the teachers and the supervisors of FFA run. This is a student-run program. Their job is to get food ready for the kids and get the transportation for them and the space provided. But the state and the local, the state officer is actually running this program. And they're the ones that organize where the kids to go, go to, what they're gonna learn about. So, it's not only the opportunity to learn from what they're hearing, but also in that leadership role. Some of our kids will get to do that based on where they're at for the years. I thought that's, what a great opportunity for our students. The other thing a lot of people have been asking about around this community is when the baseball cages, softball cages go back at the U C. That is something that, right now, another academic thing that Mr. trouble brings right now with names.
Dotson.
Mr. Dotson, thank you. Mr. Dotson's classes have been working diligently, starting to take down the temporary classrooms and working on air walls the other day. Mr. Barber, Coach Tensman, Mr. Pack, and myself have all met to discuss what the layout's gonna look like. We're gonna try to keep a couple of classrooms that are currently up for Russell to use for storage, but then how we can use the rest of the area, and at the same time, be able to use it for more than just baseball softball needed. We're gonna look into, we've got a gentleman coming hopefully this weekend to look, what would it cost to reinstall? It is a, it's not a simple project to get those wires out. They have to be done just right. But possibly moving the cage at Schuler out to there as well, because it's one that can raise it lower. So we could utilize, it'd be nice to have a separate cage out there. At the same time, be able to raise it up out of the way so if we needed to use that space for other things during a school day, for whatever, we could still use that space. So, real excited about getting that project going here very soon. Any questions? Heather can't go yet. She's got to send those.
All right. Just to kind of creep over my report. Middle school finished up our NWA testing last week. And this week, we're doing makeups, and we're hoping to, we're gonna, in the future, moving forward, make that part of the decision-making, looking at that data and doing what's best for kids, part of our MTSS time. And that's gonna take time, but, but that's one of our big goals. We want to get accomplished. We did add, two weeks ago, we added 15-minute wellness time to our school day. So the kids, basically, it's always a well, they're recess time over lunch hour. And that's gone over very well with the kids and the teachers. It's, we've seen a lot of positives with that. Mrs. Chamberlain, myself, we're gonna, our goal this year is, once a month, we're gonna do an AMS walk. Where we just completed it today. We took two days. We went in every classroom, spent three to five minutes, and then take some time and write a note to every teacher, kind of what we saw, positives. So, for me, it was very energizing to get out there. That should be the main part of our job, and it really recharged my battery. Sometimes we get wrapped up in the managerial stuff, but we're gonna really make that a conscious effort to get out there. And I need to get out there more myself, but the two of us are gonna kind of take to that this year. Mrs. C and myself, this next month, we're planning on starting a student advisory meetings once a month with middle school kids, just pull them out of lunch and ask them like four simple questions, what are, you know, issues in the middle school? What are some things you'd like to see changed? And what's going well? Just to kind of get the kids' perspective, because sometimes we don't give them credit. They normally ask for really great ideas, but I don't have anything really to add to my report. If you guys have questions for me?
So, are you trying to talk to all the students, or like who are you?
We're gonna just kind of randomly pull kids out, get a good mix of the kids. And they don't know what's coming. We're just gonna kind of be standing down by the cafeteria when they walk in and say, you, 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 and take them down.
Sounds terrifying.
Versus, they grab their lunch, and then we'll take them down to Mrs. C's classroom and just have a lunch together.
I wonder how many of them will say, I didn't do anything.
They'll talk a little nervous at first, yeah.
Oh, so you'll do little roundtable?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Like, like, it's eight kids' time.
Yeah.
Don't worry, there's too many.
That sounds good. I'll be, I'd be really interested to hear it.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
So, I have a little first grader, my, my third grade jokes are the funniest kids in school. Third funniest kid in school. We've gone to fourth grade, so I'm sure you can tell on James' jokes now. But now the first grader that stops by the office. Today, she told me a story that there was two muffins in the oven, and one muffin looked at the other muffin and said, oh, it's hot in here. And the other muffin looked at it and said, ah, a turkey muffin! So, imagine the first grader saying that. So, that's Washington right there.
Stacy knows how to give a presentation. Starts right out with cute kid stories.
So, I also had the pleasure of sitting in on a meeting today, actually, for special education meetings. So we're starting a couple of kids at preschool that need some extra support. And so it's always good to get kids started at a young age. They were both really positive meetings, and I came back to Washington. I had two more meetings. A little third grade girl who's doing amazing, and we're just about ready to let her fly, but we're gonna keep it just a little bit longer. And a little kindergarten guy who spent a couple of years in our preschool, and now he doesn't need that. So, big celebrations when those things happen. So, all right, just want to shine a light. That's team, team culture, and that's academic excellence. My sped people, my counselors, I include Carolyn because she's been doing a lot of work with some of these kids too. Gentry, they all work hard together. We've got some tough kiddos, and they really do a lot of the work. So, proud of the work that they've done.
So, the thing I want to talk about first with team culture is, if you have not been in the high school commons for lunch, like, please come, because our food service team, I'm sorry, guys, but we have the best. I meant like, you just push in a better mood. So like today, I was able to help serve lunch, and I was just amazed at, first of all, they gave me the easy job. No question there. So that was not surprising. But Mark, I feel like using kids' names as they come in, I mean, they know every kiddo. Like, she saw things that I didn't see, and I was like, how'd she see that? And she goes, I've been here, so it's up. Love it. Music playing, they engage with the students. They're just amazing, amazing team to have in our building. So, wanted to give them a shout out because I left there feeling awesome. So, I think that's, that's great. So then, yes, I was gonna say something about Mr. M. So, we have AP English Lit in place this year, and I was in class last week. Yeah, last, I don't know, textbook, last week, and it was phenomenal to, the class has a routine in place, like the kids, and it was funny too, because one of the kiddos, Miss Berryhill was helping someone, one of the kiddos goes, all right, guys, I'm starting the time for reading. Let's go. You know what to do. And I was like, everybody just started reading and like doing what was supposed to be done. So I love seeing that. I was like, oh, that's kind of, that's awesome. Juniors and seniors. And then their focus in, after they did reading, and it was great, because as the kids were reading their novel of choice, watching them, everybody had a pencil in hand, had highlighter, like those flags. And one of the students I was sitting by had this, I can tell she had a system with her book. And I was like, can you talk me through like what system you're using for your free reading book? She had certain colors for character development, something that she thought would be for foreshadowing, something that she thought was, kind of be some of the name, because it was character. Like, so she had this whole process, and she, they all came up with their own system, but they had specific things that they needed to be looking for as they read their free novels. And I love that. And then the main point of the lesson that day, they were, oh, I forget what it was they were writing, but they were working on thesis statements. And thesis statements, as a former English teacher, is a struggle for kiddos to sometimes really accomplish and master. And the way that Miss Berryhill went through it with the kids, and then the kids gave feedback to one another and then talked through why something was good, and they noticed they had two of the key components, but they were missing the third component. It was just like, it was just great to see that learning taking place. So. Thank you.
All right, yeah. Try to at least have a good funny story. So we, so I've had the opportunity to sub, I said that, right? I'm gonna do something. It was actually awesome. So I actually loved it. So, I had the opportunity to sub two days in the class a week, and then had a couple of teachers that had to leave early for volleyball, so I get to help in there and be with the kids. And so, the teachers, this is great, they do a read-aloud, which is good modeling for the kids and exactly what we should be doing for, you know, 10, 15 minutes at the end of the day. And the first teacher, I went, they're like, well, you're not gonna do the read-aloud. I'm gonna give you this as set because I really want to know what's going on in the book. So, of course, that means I'm going to read it out. I go to open the book with like five minutes left to school, and the kids are like, you can't do that! No, no! The teacher said that you cannot read the book today because she is gonna be so mad at you. So I started reading the book. They were in like pure anarchy, like, no, you cannot do this. But the, well, I got like a paragraph in, and I was getting yelled at so much, I'm like, I have to put the book away. They were defending their teacher, to be fair, so I thought that was fine. And then I was in another classroom last Friday, and I'm reading it. You know, then, then there's a read-aloud timeset, and they had birthday trees during the time. And I'm looking at the two books, and I look at her in the room, and I'm like, this isn't the book you guys usually read, is it? She said, no. I bet she's leaving you because she doesn't want you to read the book today or something. So, it's just really, I mean, it's kind of fun that the teachers are, I mean, there's that academic excellence, but that it's just that kind of fun thing, and the kids so defend their teachers too in both of those circumstances that they wouldn't even read their book. So, that was pretty fun. I do have a Mr. Miller story. So, come Mentor Day, when the new teachers were here, and the mentors came and visited. We had, we had lunch, and we're sitting there, and after lunch, Mr. Miller goes, have I got something for you? Which, you know, is, if it comes from somebody else, you're usually a little bit scared of what that might look like. But I would invite you to come to the Schuler office sometime. We, he's got an aquaponic system he had applied for, and they were gonna use it in a certain place, and they didn't need it there anymore. So he goes, I know you guys do hydroponics and learn about aquaponics in the fifth grade, so would you guys want it? And I don't think you can turn that down when your, your kids are using it. So it's been a pretty neat thing. We have five poi fish, the fifth grade classroom name. The fifth grade classrooms planted some lettuce and peas and tomatoes and corn. Mostly lettuce, just because we're seeing if it works. But Mr. Miller's been down there a couple of times, helping us out, and it doesn't look like yet lettuce yet, but we're hoping that sooner or later, it will be something that we can take food from and share with the kids. So, that was a positive, and since I saw him out here, I had to say something because it's, it's pretty neat. And, and, you know, it's something where he doesn't just hand it to you and walk away. He's there for support the whole time, which is nice. One last thing, if you guys have been downtown or in the park, you might see some faded chalk in certain places. So as a fun, like, team culture thing for homecoming, we decided we would go chalk downtown some of the classrooms at some times. We chalk downtown, you know, go, go Trojans and Trojan heads and a few different things. We were hoping the rain stayed away, but actually with fourth grade, we're like chalking in the rain. Which is ironic, because it just washes away, but luckily it didn't. It was just a light sprinkle under the canopies downtown, and fifth grade class went down. And it's some under the canopies, and now I'm thinking, it's gonna be a long time, because we just went for a walk down there. But if you see that stuff, we were just trying to show some spirit and do some fun stuff. So, that was great. That was us.
Thank you. Everybody. All right, moving on, superintendent report.
Just want to highlight a few things on academic excellence. Our second year instructional framework is going pretty well based upon the feedback the POC is receiving, facilitators. We're working administratively to review rubrics to determine the differences between those descriptive columns and the connection between different indicators. the differences between those descriptive uh columns and the connection between different indicators. Uh I know our math is, our math folks are really working hard. It's a challenge for them. At the same time, their, their heads are up, they're collaborating a lot. I think they're discovering a few things. Maybe scope and sequence may be a little bit different. Um and then that's, that's creating additional challenges. But we're making great progress in that. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a, a year or two of, of hard work and within that, we'll, we should be at that particular point where uh the bridges and the divisions are running at high level. Um and then the achieve, uh that, that chief system for the IP, that's been a battle, making slow progress and, and we're gonna create some more time for them to work on that. To get them more familiar with it. Probably the most exciting one on academic excellence is the work that we, we got an internal team developed. We're gonna try to take that work-based learning experience and kind of have a, an umbrella of all the different components that make that up. And really working hard at trying to get a registered apprenticeship going. I think it's pretty easy, as Mr. Summers said, we have the ingredients, we have the classes, the courses. We have, we have businesses willing to be a part of that. It's just a matter of, of working with Iowa Workforce Development, Department of Labor. To get all those pieces in place. Custodial Day was a hit, October 30th, a great opportunity to, to meet all of them. I know Buildings created some goodies for them, some posters and and so forth. And they felt really good about being a part of our school system. It's peace, love and lunch, I think says the theme of the National School Lunch Week. Uh Mr. McKay explained Sunday at share this morning. So that, that's part of, part of it. And then just, just uh Mallory put a, a video together on our strategic priorities and she did a great job connecting the, the document with, with my little video. Uh so thank her for that and, and then the principals and the su- and the supervisors who deal with their group, it really fleshed out the key activities a little bit more than I did in the videos. Probably the biggest uh piece of information that everybody's waiting for is what is about certified enrollment. That's off to uh Secretaries Janet Nicholas, who does a great job with that. And we're scrambling to get open enrollment papers signed and different things like that. But uh we finally got to the finish line today and uh basically the information, it's live in your link there. Uh but, but our resident students being served this year is thirteen fifty-six point seven versus last year thirteen forty, which is a difference of sixteen point three. We have ten more students being open rolled out versus or tuitioned out than we did last year, forty-three to thirty-three. We get a little bit of, of enrollment for the homeschool students who take dual role classes, two point one five. For our certified number of fourteen hundred and one point eight five students, which compared to last year of thirteen hundred seventy-five point one six, twenty-six point seven students more than last year. So we have an increase in that. Um and then our open enrolled ends increased by twenty-three point three students from a hundred and thirty-four point eight to one fifty-eight point one. So we add ten more open rolled out. We have twenty-three plus on the open enrolled end. So that's an increase of thirteen to the positive. Our volunteer preschool went down by fives, uh full-time, so that's really ten students. So we're at eighty-one point five. And then I think we have a half a dozen uh special ed kids that are four years old. So unlike last year where we had probably a little over a hundred students enrolled in, in a Jack and Jill in our program. As far as four-year-olds concerned, we, we, we have probably ninety. So that's obviously a number that we use as we try to predict what, what's gonna happen next year. But some of our indicators that were pretty accurate in the past haven't always been accurate the last two years. So we'll see how that plays out. So basically that says we are uh, we're serving forty point nine students more than we had last year. So an increase of forty point nine students. The homeschool assistance program, I don't know, they increased, but the total FTE for the homeschool assistance program is twenty. That is, and that's made up of point four, point three students. So uh I think they're around sixty students in, in, in that program. And then you can also see the last line, limit, limited English proficiency. Uh we had the increase of five point five E uh FTEs in EL. So that would indicate to you that that population has grown in our, in, in our school system over the past year. So those are the numbers. We think those are about as accurate we can get to. There, there might be a little half, half up or half down yet that we haven't figured out, but obviously last year, Tom and I were looking and it was, it was fifty-nine students that we served more. So we're at about a hundred students over the last two years of an increase. Roof's done at the achievement center. Been on the, the playgrounds, waiting for some concepts there. Bowles working on blowing up the water lines for the irrigation system and then once football's over, we'll take care of the concession stand. Mr. Mitchell talked a little bit about the achievement center and where else we're working on that. We got rid of most of the most of the used furniture and, and our pickup on Ed Polak Drive after school. We have our buses um off of the curb with their uh stoplights on flashing. We had some problems where when people were driving by that. Had a couple since then, but I think that's a lot safer than it was when we did not have our emergency lights out. So that's a good change that we made. And I think we continue to let, make people know that uh when, when the stop signs are out there, not to be passing buses.
Let's move on to board report.
Okay. I had the opportunity last Thursday to lead a session for our county wide ag day that the Cass County Farm Bureau put on. I got to see all of our third graders. They're awesome. They're attentive. They're respectful. They're inquisitive. They're engaged. Uh so that was really, really fun. Also, we had some of our MFA students that were leading as group leaders and they did a great job with that. So. Then today I had the opportunity to be in Altoona with Sarah and Mary Beth Passos. Kind of neat to be part of a panel with two of our previous business professionals there. Uh but Sarah did a tremendous job. So we were very fortunate to have her in Atlantic and she, she led the session and we were in the ballroom. And so she, she did a great job.
I had a nice interaction with the fourth graders. Um I walked the Iowa healthy estate thing. I walked with a group of adults and we were walking on that Bull Creek pathway and James had the whole, I think all the fourth graders were out.
Just to make sure, one, I think one fifth grade class.
Okay. Yeah, and they were just, they were completely perfect. I mean, their behavior was great. They were out there and it was a beautiful day and as we walked past, they stuck out their hands and we did sort of a high five with all these old people, you know, walking past them in the opposite direction. And they were all really just friendly and nice and being really well behaved. And I was like, oh, I love seeing that. Seeing the kids out getting exercise and having good community interaction.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Yes. I've been working.
I've been gone sick and.
Okay, let's move on to financial reports.
Yeah, there's only a couple of things I want to point out. So go ahead and go to page four of the secretary report. Well.
Damn, this is you. So we've got Karen listening to us because she's making it live.
Changing it right now.
Of course, yes.
Thank you, Sarah.
We can do it. We can do it now.
I got this one marked up.
She's listening. She just linked us. Thank you.
So you'll notice on the revenues, uh our property tax, the taxes were paid in September. So you see that we received some of those dollars for that. And remember on PEPAL and general fund, usually in November, December, we receive that income surtax amounts. This is gonna be coming in a couple of months. And then you'll see that save, we received two months the revenue from one set sales tax. You go down PEPAL to the um
I'm sorry, how much time is that? That covers what?
Two, two months.
That's two months. Okay.
So over a hundred thousand each month. And then the eighty-nine, four sixty, ninety-eight under PEPAL, that's the final fire payment. So we received that, that, that amount as well. For that. Otherwise, not too much more there. If you go to the general fund comparison report, I think that's page six. You'll notice that our salaries in September was one million, three eighty-seven, two fifty-three, ninety-five, which is significantly higher. But as Sarah's noted there, the hero, hero's pay was two hundred ninety-four to fifty. So that's part of that number. Otherwise, I don't think there's too much more that needs to be pointed out. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions or do I have a motion to approve? Williams? Yes. Hunt?
Yes.
Pellet? Yes. Claire?
Yep.
Yes. Okay, consent items. Does anybody want anything to pull to, or to ask questions or?
Do you want to know? One of our recommendations is interpreter. We've not, we, we do have a Spanish interpreter, which we might have the chief keys of interpreter. So this is, this is really gonna serve our district well. Gable families and, and students of, of that population. So we're pretty excited to be able to finally land some work to, to serve that role. And will we approve the consent items?
Yep.
Williams? Yes. Hunt?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on to discussion items. Um we put thought exchange back on for discussion tonight and invited Mallory based on our discussion last time. I think we had, the board had questions for her. So welcome, Mallory. Thank you for coming tonight. So I guess, well, in our action items tonight, we're, we're up to approve it. So maybe you, maybe you can just remind us.
Yeah, so uh with thought exchange, you know, we, we approved it uh well, last October, I guess. So it's coming up here in the next couple of days. We did, we did spend some time getting to use it. We've used it. You, you guys saw how much we used it. Outside of the central office, we, our, Mr. McKay had done one, but as far as the principals are concerned, we didn't do too, too many of those. And I think that was something that we, we sold, sold that to, to the group. I think we have some things in place moving forward to, we probably have to, we probably have to designate weeks to, to, to send them out to do that if that's a possibility, but you're absolutely right. We have not used our five seats as effectively as we should, we should have. And so that's, that's pretty expensive. But the option, the other option that we have with thought exchange, if we think it's still a tool that helps us achieve that team culture of multi-directional information, I think it can still sort of roll, but maybe as, as one seat instead of five seats. So that's I'll just, I'll turn it over to you because we, I know we talk a lot about it, but you, you're kind of the meat and potatoes of, of putting them together and collecting the data and so.
Yeah, um I, if, if you have specific questions, we can start there. Or if you want me to share my feedback first and then ask questions, you guys kind of let me know. Um I know you have some specific questions, I think, so if you want to start there. And then maybe my thoughts would, would tie in with the answers of those questions anyway. So are there specific questions you have about it or do?
Well, I'd be interested to hear your reflection on it. I mean, we're, you know, I, I don't know. Yeah, we just talked a little bit. Like it's, it's a lot of money for the amount of usage we're getting.
You bet. So you know, um right as I was hired, I think actually before I officially started, I came to a meeting um about thought exchange and it was being rolled out. And it was really the first I had heard of a program like this in kind of this PR school communication industry. And so since then, um I've connected in a couple of um like peer support groups for school PR communications people and a lot of times people are looking at purchasing a program like Thought Exchange. There are other programs out there similar to that. And so people will offer, um you know, what do you think of X, Y, Z? Or we're, we're thinking of, we've narrowed it down to these two app, you know, options. Um you know, what are your feedback? And so I think um there is no perfect program like Thought Exchange out there. I think they all are gonna have, you know, maybe some are cheaper, but they don't come with the total anonymous factor. You know, some might be even more expensive, but they're cumbersome. And so I have not explored the other options that are out there at full length. I think Thought Exchange is it, I had not used a program like Thought Exchange until I came here. And I think what it can do for us is incredible. I don't think a different program fixes an engagement rate. I don't think it fixes a user, um you know, usage. I think um it's about being intentional and forming a plan and then sticking with that plan. And so yes, I, I would agree with Mr. Barber. I think five seats going forward is unnecessary until maybe we have some of those things more ironed out. Something that I would envision if we do choose to use Thought Exchange going forward, or really in the program of this matter, is having kind of a rolling question once our new website is out there. You know, like it, it can be something that's just uh, you know, maybe it's Thought Exchange Thursday or, or you know, something like that where um there is maybe not something that has a, a deadline, but it's, it's creating consistency and familiarity with all of our stakeholders in having the program have like a, just a general question like what was your child's favorite school lunch this week? I mean, that's not anything that we need maybe to know to make hard and fast decisions, but it would create the familiarity and um just, you know, the more people are using it, the more, you know, comfortable they're going to get with it. Now, we probably don't need to know what their kids' year's school lunch was for a five thousand dollar seat, but I think that is a means to an end, you know, using it in that capacity in a more not so serious manner. But then also, I do think forming a plan, you know, with, with the, with the goal in mind that we do use it for bigger conversations and bigger, bigger data gathering. So all that to say, yes, I'm sure there are other programs out there that would do the same thing. I, I don't know what those are right now tonight. And so I think that Thought Exchange is very user-friendly. I think that I can find opportunities to get in front of staff and parents and show them how it works. And I think that will help, that would help engagement. I think that's something that I could have done better in this last year with Thought Exchange. And I think too, you know, when you start a program like this, sometimes we have an idea in mind of like, okay, we're going to start with, you know, administration and we're going to get them using it. And then, you know, how do we, you know, where do we go from there? And then the other way is we could have just opened it and, you know, given everybody the keys to the kingdom. I don't know that you know which way was better to do until we're here having a discussion. And so I think knowing that, you know, teachers can use it in the classrooms, immediate, you know, responses to maybe what book they're reading next, or you know, I, I think there's greater usability that we did not explore. I think we know that. And so I would support the decision of keeping one seat to just see if in this next year, we can hone in a better plan with great intention of, of what, you know, our goal is. And maybe that is like, you know, a weekly rotation. So the first week of the month, I, we do something for Washington. And then the second, it's, you know, middle school. And so there's just a consistency. I think there's a lot of things we haven't tried. And I think the technology is really incredible, the technology behind how Thought Exchange works and that it is truly anonymous. I think there is great value in the technology if we have a plan to support how we use it.
I think that's very well stated. My, my observation or my frustration is, you know, when you have a tool, a tool is supposed to make your life easier.
Right.
And the kind of my sense was, within our discussion last time, we were having to think of reasons to communicate with people to use that Thought Exchange. So it shouldn't add to everybody's level of work that, oh, I gotta come up with a Thought Exchange. So I guess that's the question for us this next year going forward, is, is it a tool that we people want?
Automatically turn to.
Yes, yes. People want information. So they think of using Thought Exchange.
Yeah.
As opposed to, we're gonna have this rotation in this month, we gotta come up with something to survey our people on.
Because.
Right. We all are too busy to do that for just.
Yeah. I think my two hurdles, if like my, my first two things that I would want to challenge myself and all of us to think through, if, if we move forward with this, is how does it become a natural, like a natural tool for us to use that we just think to use that for? Maybe things were not even, that wouldn't come naturally, but could they come naturally if we, you know, use it more often? And two, how do we set them up in a way that the first time, you know, somebody signs on, we, we're getting good, good input right away? Because I do think a natural challenge is, is the, is the coming back on to the Thought Exchange to rate thoughts that have come in after you. And so I, I think industry-wide, they don't shy away that that's, that that is a hurdle for any organization that's using it to, you know, come across. But that is something that I want to try to be creative in, you know, is it more that if it's not a niche group of people who need, no, are we posting it on social? Are we, you know, how do we?
It has to come back.
Yeah, it has to circle around. Yeah. So that's something I'm really thinking about because I do think that is where we get the, the actual value from, not the first time they go on there. It's the second and third time. And I really think that would be all, all that's needed. I think at that point, you know, we do them in such a condensed amount of time that I think, you know, but we're busy. And so we'll be, you know, but then we, for the example of conferences, you know, we polled parents and teachers, we heard what they said, we acted immediately, and we got great feedback. And so I, I think that, you know, we did hear, yes, this is working. No, this isn't. Such minor adjustments were needed to fit the needs of our families. And we were able to do that like immediately. So.
And that was the perfect example of a perfect use for it. But it's just, do we, I'm sure there are many other instances throughout the year that we could get that type of
Right.
feedback, but we're just not seeing it or identifying it.
Right, correct.
I think that's my main concern in the feedback that I've gotten as I've asked people was the first time.
Yeah.
Is, you know, they're okay with the first time and the time.
Yeah.
But then taking the time to go back in and rate things.
Right. And, you know, I don't know. I, I've started kind of going back into some of those discussions that we've had amongst by like PR peers and things like that. And the other programs that they, other, other programs like this that are out there that are being used. You know, a lot of them are similar, but I have not died, you know, dove in deep enough to know you know, the, the mechanics of some of those others and how they would differ or not, you know, from, from Thought Exchange. So that could be just an industry issue, you know, of this kind of program, you know. So, but I, I don't know that either for sure.
So you talked about anonymous, like, and I don't know what, I know there's Survey Monkey, what Google, there's a, what other surveys do. Are those not anonymous?
I think they are. A lot of them, like Survey Monkey, you know, may require an email address, you know, may require an account set up. You know, Google, I think people may be weary because it is going to be a link to your Google account. And you know how Google's like always signed in in the background, you know? Um, so where this is just a totally separate program. I don't know that they're not anonymous. But I, I'm sure that they are.
I mean, Survey Monkey's just really one way. Like, you're asking people questions and then you're getting their data. There's not.
There's not like a feedback. There's no real like.
I guess that fee was, is my question is that I know people, some want to do anonymous. So we know that that's important.
Yeah.
But for the cost, and we're not getting the second and third, third round.
Right.
People coming in.
Yeah.
I mean, are we?
I, I think.
I don't know, you know, it's just.
Yeah.
We had the benefit of using S R dollars for this.
Right, right, right.
I, I see this as it was an opportunity to try it out. But I think we still have the opportunity to use some S R funding for this next summer die.
Yeah.
But I think that's the ultimate question that we'll have to ask.
Yeah.
When we go to put some of our own budget right into this. Is there a better, as you're, as you're gonna investigate, is there a better opportunity? Or, you know, is, will we make use of this well enough?
Yep.
So what you guys say was the original purpose for this, was that for sometimes us, sometimes Mr. Barber, sometimes the, the principals, to get data that they needed from their staff or from other stakeholders? And then also, we wanted to help build more of a sense of connectedness among our staff. So that when they responded to it and they saw what other people were saying, and would we say, were those the two primary purposes? So I'm wondering, all y'all, why did you guys use it for that? Do you guys feel like you get that information? You feel like you have other channels that you're doing that through?
But what, for me, the one that I chose to do last year was specifically about communication. There were some people who were worried about if they gave me something negative, like how would I respond to that?
Like on a Thought Exchange or just anything?
I did on a Thought Exchange.
Would you, so when you were asking them that in certain.
Yeah, so I did that via Thought Exchange because I kept getting back, well, community is a group that I was, what about and so that's why I did a Thought Exchange. And I, it was risky, you know, we just really, but I was like, I gotta pull that, not gonna grow it back. Oh, so whatever. But I think like this year is interesting because we've all got placed these specific committees. So like where I'm on the leadership team, we've got the climate culture, adult focus, and other culture groups. So I think we have more stranger communities that are coming to us. And I have designated people that who are like my main educators to get back to me if there are concerns or challenges. And there are people that are uncomfortable and bringing us to me. So again, it's interesting because I just had a conversation with like facilitators. The other person wanted to be a facilitator because they didn't think they'd be able to approach it with me in their head. That is what I'm getting at. That it makes people, you know, worry about that. So I just want to get better. I can't get better if I don't. So I think at my high school this year, I had more direct lines of communication.
That's what it seemed like I was hearing from you guys, was you guys were like, yeah, and I went back to my D L T or, you know, I talked to this group. So do the rest of you agree with Heather or does anybody disagree?
I think we're dealing with lots more groups. And Thought Exchange is more, to me, is more the much bigger group. Or in a smaller, I get feedback real quick. Through the process, through this. If you're trying to get information from this stakeholder and that stakeholder, that one, that's how this, Thought Exchange is a much better, a lot more stuff more deal on a day-to-day basis, a weekly basis. It's small groups.
If we want information from the larger school community, though, parents, community, where do we, how do we get that currently? Or do we?
Google forms.
But you get it that one-way communication and you always need to put in.
Right. But they know that their feedback was given. They know that they.
Yeah, because you get that thank you for your response.
Right. But I'm saying, you know, they, they have the satisfaction of knowing I voiced my opinion.
Yep.
But they may not hear.
Yeah.
And you guys get pretty good buy-in from those?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just said ask that.
We can control, and we can do a better job of controlling, we can control the group. So if we have a teacher who wants to do Thought Exchange, we can have a P E at two o'clock. Okay, everybody go on, have it up on the screen. Or if we want to get it good for students together, we can facilitate that. But when we send it out to community, it's pretty hard to work it through the steps.
It's a difference in price to you.
Five grand versus twenty-two.
And so wasn't there some, I'm sorry, were you gonna say something? Wasn't there some concern about like privacy or something? Like if we have one seat, like we're sharing with other schools or something like that?
Yeah, by, by having one seat, you're, you're consortium with other schools, but they're not going to be too interested in Atlantic. If they have a Thought Exchange, they're probably gonna. Yeah, so there's.
So all it is, they could just see the outcome of our.
They could, we could, we could go in, if Glenwood would have it, we could go in and see what they're asking and what their results are getting, they could do the same.
Still all the time.
But, yeah, we wouldn't know who's saying what. I mean, we still wouldn't have, you know, identified information, I guess.
But we would control who we sent our Thought Exchange to. They couldn't.
Yeah, within Thought Exchange, there's no, because we, we literally don't know who's filling out, there's no database of like contacts, you know what I mean? So the links still would have to be sent through our email system, you know?
So basically, you would be the one who ran that one seat. And if James wanted to reach out to all the parents or something like that, you know, could go to you.
Yeah. And set it up. And then there's a way to have managers within that. So then he could be a manager. So I could set it up and send him the link and then make him a manager. And then at that point, he does with it, you know, he, he gathers that information and basically owns that Thought Exchange. But yes, that would be, yeah.
So I guess I was kind of, when we did this, I was under the understanding that teachers would be able to utilize this too, like in their classrooms or something. Do you think that, that is a?
I do, yeah.
Something that, yes, would be wanting to utilize?
Yeah, early on, actually, Sheryl Anderson came and asked about pulling some of her students about the support they were getting in the classrooms. I thought that was a great use of gathering information so she could learn how to, you know, how to support them because she can't be in every classroom all the time, you know? And to Christie's point, I think it has to be a natural benefit. I think if it's, if it's going to work, and I think if it's going to be, you know, a tool that helps and doesn't bog down, then it needs to be something that, you know, a teacher thinks like, like that. I think that's a perfect example of a teacher using that because maybe they want to provide feedback about a specific classroom that they don't feel supported in. You know, they can say that. And not, we, we wouldn't really even, we wouldn't know what student was actually saying that, but we would know the classroom that maybe needs some additional resources or a meeting with her or, or things like that. So I think that is a, you know, a perfect example. And so I think by opening it up to teachers and saying, you know, this is an option for you, I think that's a, like a complete group of people that we have not explored this way. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if we do the five thousand this year, and we can continue just doing five thousand, because eventually we will have, we don't have to budget for this.
I think that, that's the recommendation I'm gonna have, have tonight, you know, and to your questions and your concerns about that. We have to, we have to demonstrate to the board that it is useful for, for what we're trying to achieve with that. And I think there's opportunities for us to do that. And if we visit that this next summer, and hey, we've gotten a lot from it, it's probably worth five thousand for saying, well, we, we gave it two, two years, we didn't get the outcome we were looking for. Maybe we need to look at something different.
Thanks for coming.
Anything you want to say while you're here?
Um. No, I mean, in, in regards to Thought Exchange, I do think, you know, I just do think perspectives were shifted in the last, you know, couple of weeks. So really how it can be utilized and how maybe it should be utilized in a district. And so I think just being given that opportunity to see if that really is something that works for A C S T would be great. And like Mr. Barber said, maybe, maybe it won't be. Maybe we learn that this isn't, and I have time to do some research on, you know, what else is out there. Maybe we find something that just is, you know, checks every box for everybody in this room. You know, I don't, I don't know yet, but yeah.
The one concern I had, I said, I don't really want to see you spending a lot of your valuable time going around teaching every individual person in Atlantic how to use Thought Exchange, you know?
Like, I don't have time to do that. So thank you.
If you're saying it's user-friendly, you know, I want people to feel like it's user-friendly. I want them to feel like it's fun and they can engage with it. And if that's not happening, then that's not how that's gonna work.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree. Yep, definitely.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to discussion item B, Board Policy Review, four hundred series.
Quite a few policies in the four hundreds. This is a review over forty years. So I just want to check it out a few things. So not really recommending any changes outside of just reviewing each policy. But since the last time we did do the four hundred series, we did go to an online time clock. So if you're, even if you go into is it the first one? Where it says that, oh, for example, overtime, it says they have a lot of time cards. So I think that if we have that whole system written in our policy for, for time cards, we need to convert that to the, to the electronic time clock that we currently use. And then anytime you see in the policies where it talks about procedures, especially if you're looking like for credit card use and, and some other business procedures that we have in place, there's a business manual that everybody's required to read and sign off on that they understand what those, those pieces are. So that's included in a lot of these different policies as you look through those. One that probably, bless you, by the way. One of the truancy officer, I don't know if that really reflects our procedure. Our truancy officers would probably be our attendance people. And then if there's some, some attendance issues, then the principals or the counselors get involved in that. What I'll do tell you about the truancy piece is our county attorney works well with us. But she requires us to do the work that we should be doing. What are we, what are we doing? Are we meeting with parents? Are we, are we creating contracts or doing all those pieces? So when we look at truancy and not so much truancy officer, my, each of my principals do a great job on that and working with a group of people, working with parents to try to get kids to come to school if they have that problem. And if they jump through all the hoops, I don't like that phrase that much, but did a lot of work on the front end to try to make it work for that child. Eventually get to, get, get to the county attorney and that, that person or that's the network song. Works on trying to come up with a workable plan at that one. So that's probably not stated in that policy exactly how we do it because we do not have a truancy officer. And then the other one I wanted to touch base with, I guess, get your thoughts is 407.8, which is licensed employee early resignation incentive. Currently, we do have incentive if someone either is going to be done with the teaching profession or is, is going to take another position. We give $500 if they resign in January, 300 in February, 100 in March. Well, given the teacher shortage and giving some of the late resignations that we got last year, I think it might be wise to reconsider that a little bit and raising that. Now, that doesn't guarantee that, you know, by January, someone's going to know that they're going to go take another job. But if there's a situation where they could, they could do that and maybe we offer the compensation for that, we might be able to advertise for those open positions if we do have those.
Is this different for retirement or?
So last year, we had a few retirees take advantage of that. Then we, then we also had some that decided to, to retire in April. A lot of those, by the end of April, many school districts have their contracts signed. So if you're, if you're putting openings out there, third week in April, there's a lot of chance, there's a good chance. So many of those people that may be considering Atlanta have signed their contracts to the school that they're currently working with. And, and they're not available to even consider those positions.
So just maybe doubling that amount or tripling, what's the?
Well, I'd say double or triple. That's, that's what I think was probably considered.
I'd like to see significant. It's going to actually be meaningful.
If you did 1,500, 1,500, is that?
Does it have that much to have three dates too? I was wondering if just having to, I mean, does it make that much?
Just March, if we get it March versus April, does that make much difference?
Slight, a slight difference.
Teachers are nodding.
I would have been just January, March.
January, February.
Yeah.
January, February.
So what kind of number do you want?
I would suggest 1,500 and 1,000 maybe. I don't know. Is that enough of the incentive?
We're getting.
Better than it was.
I think you're going to go too much.
We'll put those in there. Remember, we'll bring these back next month. So we'll have another conversation about it. Is there any other ones that you kind of read through that you're saying, wow, about this?
I still haven't been through all of them, but I've been making notes on once that I was.
The comments on the site are those yours or Sarah's?
Those are mine. Okay.
I didn't know we could do that.
And I didn't know that it wouldn't say who it was. I didn't know it wouldn't say who it was.
Yeah.
Probably, you probably have a color or something there. Cause I think it's a blue dot.
It, well, it is.
Word document.
I didn't, you never like, I guess it does say board comments. I always have to have.
Thank you. Okay. So it's always been there. No one's ever done this before me?
Well, usually, usually what happens.
Usually there's notes from Sarah.
We have, if we have Iowa school board policy primer, she's going to put the rationale behind that.
Right. So are we getting anything from them?
No, this, so we're required by law to review each section every five years. So this is starting that other cycle. So this is kind of different than, oh, we bring up 10 because legislation will change and therefore we have to change, make some changes to specific policies that match law.
That makes more sense because I was looking at these comments. She can say, know this?
Yeah, no, it's me who doesn't know. Thanks. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
No, I wanted to ask that because I was waiting for him to answer those questions. So.
Well, let's, let me go on there. Because this morning they weren't on there.
Oh, no, they've been on there for a while.
Last edit was two days ago because I have not had any time to do anything for the last two days.
Let's, let's look at, let's look at these quick.
Yeah, some of these are bigger conversations.
Background checks and everybody who's in contact with students, yes. So if you're, if you're, you're voluntary to go to living history farm by Friday with the fourth graders, you have to go through a background check in order to be able to volunteer.
Okay. And then fourth paragraph, it says the district determines on a case by case basis whether other positions besides teachers will require background checks.
Everybody's required. So we can change that, right?
Yeah.
Second paragraph, public staff have a side hustle and solicitors.
Fellow staff as customers. Yeah, you can tell. I didn't really think this was going to be discussed.
Well, then I think it's, I think it's outlined in there. So if.
It made it sound like they're not supposed to talk to anybody about their.
But if they're, if they're filed, then if, if that's happening, they're addressed and maybe they need to stop it. That's probably the first step. And then if they don't stop.
Does anyone come ask you for permission? Because I think that's what it says. They have to come and get permission.
We have very, we have very little of that. Now, if you have a great apple, Chris, that might happen, but. That isn't good to my desk.
So strangely specific.
And usually they just share with the custodian anyway.
Probably why. Travel compensation, that seems low to me. And then I wondered if maybe it doesn't happen very often. Our travel compensation is 30 cents per mile.
Correct.
Personal vehicle.
That's 57.
I think it might be. 57. That's what I think.
And at one time, I think, and like this could be changed, but I think the thought process was that we wanted people using district vehicles. So we didn't want to be paying out mileage. And so the thought was if there's a vehicle available, you should be using a district vehicle instead of getting mileage.
And that's what that says. So that's why I was wondering whether that doesn't happen very often.
Some people, you know, in the past have chosen to use their own vehicle. And so that.
But if you, for example, if, if, if teacher policy says a, you can go to Des Moines to a conference and you can take a school van. And one of the individuals said, no, I want to drive myself. We wouldn't, we wouldn't supplement those miles because they had an opportunity to take school.
So they wouldn't get paid anything?
They wouldn't get paid mileage.
Right. So in which case I don't see why we wouldn't just pay the standard rate. Because we're talking about times when people do not have the opportunity to use a district vehicle. They are being compelled to use their own private vehicle.
Want to issue the federal rate?
And then, I mean, would we, would you put the policy just to use the federal rate? To just change that and just change this over here? And it doesn't. Because of the inflation, but I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know the political activity if we want to talk about that one right now, but it seems like that's a lot. But I, I did feel like people are more comfortable in general with sort of expressing political opinions in a lot of different ways. And I felt like this was a, there's not a lot there necessarily to give us guidance.
I guess I would be curious if there's an update from ISB on that. I don't know. Traditionally, I feel like, you know, in schools, that was not something you knew about people. That was something that was kept close and in our society. It's not.
Government class might have some.
And my kids' comments, they went through, because of course they were, you know, at the age where it was kind of crazy that their government teacher was very good too. They never knew where he stood and he taught both sides. But I, when I asked my kids that, like they couldn't say which way he would go based on what he was teaching. Which I think is probably how it's meant to be, but. It would, it would, would be good to look up and see what.
There are some people in that provide cell phones for us and administrators and supervisors.
I'm just pulling up that.
Does it make sense to say that cell phones should be used for?
Yeah, I don't, there isn't a date on that one as far as when that got changed. But there's a bunch of places where it's like, cell phones are not carried out. Our provided, you know, are not, like you shouldn't be talking about students or a cell phone. Right. That's exactly, I was like, now we use cell phones for everything. Like I think before we used to think, oh, the, you know, transmissions of cell phones will be intercepted and people will hear, you know, I mean, well, obviously around the government. But, you know, they're kind of the same as landlines now.
But I think that that's why you still have a phone system in here. So if I have a cell phone and I need to make a phone call to parent, I probably want to use my, my landlines phone to make that phone call. Instead of texting.
Is that what our teachers usually do?
Well, the teachers would use that all the time now because we don't provide phones for teachers. So if they're using their cell phone, their personal cell phone to do those types of things. I think that's outlined, outlined policies as well, but that's a, that's a. Staff technology, use social networking.
I just, I just think it should be looked over. Like there's no mention of apps in there. You know, it talks about websites and, you know, I don't know if there's a substantive difference, but well, I know there is a substantive difference. And we should make sure our home culture is up to date. And then the one about the vaccine, it, it doesn't like, I don't, I didn't quite understand. Like it's just sort of a statement about it, which I guess could be, okay, maybe that's why, that's why it's an E1. That just means that it's additional information. Okay.
No, that's not a typo.
Yeah, explain that to me.
Because basically we want to have that, that, that filled out, FMLA papers filled out. Therefore, then Mr. Northwick can, can get a long-term sub and so forth and all the paperwork's in place. So when that occurs, that.
No, I was misreading it as they need to return two months before they have the baby, which seemed to me sort of odd. So no, you mean that they need to say when they plan to return?
Yeah.
No, later than two months. That was just a little bit unclear to me.
Yeah.
I couldn't understand.
We can make some little modifications and draw examples a little bit, bring those ones or questions back to you. Talk about it again at the column.
Well, all of my board colleagues are going to read all the rest of the policies and they're going to bring all their comments next time.
One of the ones that, I don't know if it needs updated is the 410.1 on substitute teachers. I had noticed it, it comments that they should be licensed teachers in Iowa. Is that still accurate or what? I don't, I don't know the legality on that, whether that's been adjusted. But there's kind of whether we're following, I don't know whether that's still the policy procedure that we follow in terms of. Because I think that we have a calling system. I'm not sure the principals are involved in.
Okay.
So that AESOP system they have in there.
So just review that one and make sure it's up to date with what we're doing.
That was just one I happened to.
Yeah.
Or that one.
I'm, now I'm going to do this. I know. The board will determine on a vacation holiday personally on a annual basis. Do all employees have to submit a vacation request to you?
No.
That's good. Should it say supervisor? And then. This isn't in the policy, but it is in the handbook that vacation has to be used by. 2/30. With summer school this year, that kind of became an issue with like supervisor for summer school. And I didn't know if that's something that the board wants to look at in that handbook. So then we don't force all of our principals to take vacation in June. You know, is there some way where you could put it to like July or something? So that way they could, you know, have two of you on vacation at a time, but not everybody.
You know, we have the trophy, so our experience and we'll, we'll talk for those are involved. And we're going to line up weeks that we make sure that people are here in regards to that. So we're taking that. Because the problem is, you know, you got, you know, administrators have 20 days. And so it's hard to get away during school year. So you got early June, July, maybe the first or second week in August because we kick, we kick that off. So really June, July are probably the only ones that. I should say they take a few days other than that, but for the most part, those are the two big months where they, they need to take, take vacation. But you're absolutely right, Jenny. We have to, you know, it's a lot easier. But you're actually right, Jenny. We have to, you know, it's a lot easier to take in June when we don't have Trojan summer experience.
So maybe we could look at that in the handbook.
Do they have to take it before the end of the school year?
Yes, it's July 1st and July 3rd. So if they take it, we do it in July. I think they try to take lots of time in July, but then they have a couple of weeks left in June. They're, you know, they're taking two weeks in here.
I just, I just and then 7.6. The early retirement.
That's, that's not, that's not the actual policy. That just states that they offer that particular one. The board has complete discretion to offer not to offer the retirement license to employees. So the actual policy itself is, is not
So, but that should still be there?
Yeah.
And I get, all the board is sitting here and Steve and I and the next president who's making the agenda, is that it? Are we have to discuss that? I am going to throw out, I kind of did some research on early retirement. I did see that some schools offer it. But it's at a lower, you know, you can pick your, your price. I'm not saying I want to go, I want to do that, but it would be part of the discussion is know that maybe every year you were going to offer five positions at a certain price instead of discussing that every It's just an idea. But I do need to know if the board wants to discuss it or not, because if we do want to discuss offering an early retirement we need to discuss that. Well, we're offering the early retirement incentive in January, so I mean, we need to discuss that in November, December. You know, we, we, just let me know. Any other questions on that? 400s?
And so we'll look at that again in November and vote on it at that point.
Let's discuss what, how we want to do that. Last year, we discussed it, but we didn't bring it up for vote.
You're talking about the policy.
I was asking.
Oh, I thought we were talking about the
She's talking about the whole
Yeah, that's what, yeah. Right. Okay, moving on, upcoming dates. Southwest Iowa Super Board meeting is November 1st at 5:30. Anybody planning on going to that at this point? If we, and Wendy, we need to add numbers or no, we don't know what day of the week that is. November 1st, at 5:30. I didn't know. I mean, do, do we want to see if we can get a
I'll take, we'll take a suburban down there.
Okay. So, and what's one, what at least an hour, right? It's over. It's over. Yeah. Josh is driving, so we get pulled over.
I'd say you'd have to wait around four.
Four, okay.
Just let Sarah know who all wants to go. I'll line up a suburban to go down there.
Do we know what they're presenting on or any
I will look, I, I don't, I've not heard from them, but I will get what their agenda
Okay, um, the IASB pre-convention workshops that are Wednesday, November 16th. And then our IASB convention board presentation is Thursday, November 17th. And then, not on here, but that Wednesday is also the delegate assembly that morning. Okay, all right, let's move on. Action items. SBRC modified supplemental amount applications for special education deficit.
So you, you can see that form that our total special ed deficit last year was 585,683.55. So by basically giving the board authority to spend that amount since that's a federal program, it's requirement. If a child needs that, that extra resource, then we are required by law to provide that. So I would recommend that someone takes the verbiage that's written down there by Sarah and approve the request for the authority to spend 585,683.55, which was our deficit for last, for last
I move to approve the request to the SBRC for modified supplemental amount and supplemental aid for the 2021-22 special education program deficit of 585,683.55 cents or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education following the audit review. Hallid? Yes.
Name? Yes.
Williams? Yes. Clarence?
Yep. Yeah.
We're going to appoint the equity coordinator.
Yes, Mr. Asmuson was our equity coordinator past. Mr. Aiden is really excited to be our we approve Mr. Aiden as our Title IX Equity Coordinator.
Mr. Aiden, have you done this before?
I have not.
Okay. Have you taken, don't you have to watch like a million videos? Have you started yet? Or you better get going because we're voting on this.
I did get an email on it.
Okay.
Maybe Charlie can help.
Yeah. Charlie can watch out.
Exactly.
Okay, do I have a motion? I move to approve Scott Aiden as the Title IX Equity Coordinator.
Sorry, good.
Thank you. Williams?
Yes.
Hunt?
Yes.
Clarence?
Yep.
Hallid? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, action I see, since we just appointed him the Title IX Equity Coordinator, we now need to update our policy stating the main change.
So move. Sorry.
Thank you. Lane? Yes. Williams? Yes. Hunt?
Yeah.
Hallid? Yes.
Yep.
Action item D, the student activity fund transfer, class of 2022.
Class of 2020, 2022 had a student activity count, and since they're no longer part of our school, we need to transfer that money. Recommendation from Mr. Mitchell is 2000, the class of 23, and 6852, 28, the class of 2024.
So was that because 23 already, like, are you anticipating how much they're going to need?
The senior class, the only thing they have left to pay is for their trip. The junior class has prom and the trip.
Okay, and so that 2000 will help them get to that where they
And this is with
So I move that we approve the transfer of 2000 to class of 23, 58, 53, 28, the class of 24. Graduating class of 22.
And they should write a nice thank you note to the class of 2022.
I think the class of 22 benefits from the class of 20
Yes.
Yes.
Hallid? Yes. Williams? Yes. Hunt?
Yeah.
Okay, action, action item E, the IASB delegate assembly, November 16th at 9:00 AM.
Designate one board member to attend that and vote for our school district.
I, I want to, I don't know that I'll do it.
I move we approve Jenny Williams, the IASB delegate.
Okay, act, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Hallid? Yes. Clarence?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Got to go fast.
I know. I'm sorry. Action item F, the summer 2023 coaching contracts.
Yeah, Mr. Mitchell has submitted a list of recommendations. You notice red baseball is still opening in our district, but the rest of them are, have served those programs at least last year, and, and many of them have served multiple years. I'm recommending you improve the list as presented.
Hallid? Yes. Clarence?
Yeah.
Lane?
Yes.
Williams? Yes.
Yeah.
Action item G, Lily Johnson estate donation.
Last spring, I received a phone call from Steve Johnson, who's the son and executor of his mother's will, Lily Johnson. Lily had left us at Atlantic School as a benefactor of $30,000 life insurance policy. And her wishes is to provide those for scholarships who are getting into the educational field. I informed him that one of the primary purposes of our school foundation is to grant scholarships to graduating high school seniors. He was agreeable that it would be appropriate place. He developed the criteria. His family would like to see a scholarship granted to individuals. There's, it's attached there. And, and the trouble is that the life insurance policy was listed to the Atlantic Community School District as a benefactor to the policy. So the board has the authority to, to transfer the money, but first they have to accept the $30,000 life insurance policy. And then they have to have a motion to transfer to the Atlantic School Foundation where they take many gifts and scholarships and make sure that the family wishes are followed through. I'm recommending that first you accept $30,000, and second transfer those, that $30,000 to the Atlantic School Foundation so that they could contribute scholarships based upon Lily and Steve's wishes outlined in your So I move that we accept the You can add the second one probably before that.
And also transfer those dollars to the foundation with the criteria for scholarships. It's outlined. Second.
Clarence?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Yeah.
Lane?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Action item H, thought exchange.
Well, I'm just, based upon what we talked about the last couple of meetings, I, I still like to have the opportunity to use it to see if it does serve the purpose that we thought it would when we first had access to it. But given the cost of a five seat and how, how we utilized it, I would recommend that purchase one seat from the AA in the consortium. At a cost of $5,000.
Just have one comment. I guess it's hard for this board member. I know it's $5,000 and it's S R funds, but after the conversations, the last two nights, I'm trying to figure out where this best benefits our kids. And I, I know we can struggle that in with different surveys and, and that stuff, but in talking, you know, the administrators, a couple of them commented that we have a couple other means of, of doing that, and I just I, I appreciate trying to go down to the one seat, but it's just hard for me. I when we get there, I, I don't support continuing it. I I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. I made a motion, so we'll see if there's
I don't have a second, so there's not here. It's just a motion dies for lack of a second. Okay, action item I, KAP number one, achievement center roof improvement project.
That project is basically completed. I think they got the medal on it the last couple of days, so all that remains for that, 221,291 is retention money. So I would recommend that we pay elevate roofing.
I move we approve KAP one for the achievement center roof improvement.
Williams?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hallid? Yes. Clarence?
Yes.
Yes.
Action item J, KAP number four, the final for the high school south parking lot.
Dave Stern for Snyder's reviewed the project and specs and they met those. So I'm recommending that we make the final KAP to United Construction, 21,868.15. And that will complete the south parking lot.
I just have one question. Sorry to make this any longer. I should ask before. The since they tore up a little bit and we had some problems with the grass when we did the turf, and now it's, how do we are we going to, if, I know we reseeded and all that, back there, I just, if this doesn't we just have two different things that went on there, and if the grass stays the way it is, we have to get that hopefully what cold it worked, but I just, that's my only is because it's brown. And I know it's going to be brown now, obviously, the seed's not coming out, and we don't want it to yet, but I just, I mean, we're done with the big project, and now we did another one in the same spot, and I just hope in the end we don't have bare dirt again, or weeds.
We're going to have, we're going to have weeds. It's going to take two or three years to get up there. I'm just, I, I, I hope that we get good gap grass growth, if we get maybe some snow. I know that's a first word around here, but and, and, you know, we get some, some moisture.
Did they get seeded around there?
We, we, yeah, they, they
Cold did the whole thing.
Guided also, they were required to put seed in the ground, but, you know, since we've done that and probably late, you know, mid-September, you would gotten what? A third, uh, three tents and another three tents. It's not like the baseball sophomore that, where we put three tents on every day and load every other, every third day, so I'm hoping to think that we're going to get some. Do I think we're going to have to probably spend a few thousand dollars to put more seed in? I think that was the reason that we went and got the seed drill to help that process and you know, it's probably going to take a couple of years to get good stand out there.
It looks nice though, Mark, a lot of shirts.
I think that, you know, with our level three program down there, we were able to level that whole thing out. It's getting out really easy. And that was just another benefit to, to put that back there. Yeah, move that we make the final payment for South Park. Second.
Lane? Yes. Hallid? Williams? Yes.
Hunt? Yeah. Yes.
Do I have the motion to adjourn?
So move.
Everyone say aye? Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.